... I was...
...still served March 26th. So you have up to 21 days to answer, so they got...
He could have...
How does that tie into the village...
Then the parties are issued, then the discovery really first picks off.
Up there.
I mean, we'd sense of discovery, they'd sense of discovery.
You know what I mean? It's really not...
Nobody's putting a lot of effort into it to get to the party.
Because it's two of them that sound almost the same. One has mixed use and...
It's all like it...
We really crank them out to...
Correct, that's what I mean. One has a mixed use.
Oh, man, next to college.
Well, my suggestion then is to do less of the discussion, maybe put a mediation for y'all's claim more in legal fees.
Exactly.
He works on diesel equipment, diesel trucks and so...
If they're smart, that's whatever they're going to do.
Wasn't even that move at all.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
The problem is, their...
Because the one...
Clarence got an insurance company buying their little...
Evidently, it was same type of...
Probably under reservation rights here.
Oh, there's no doubt.
The insurance company says, well, we have to defend...
I can't remember the guy's name. I didn't talk to him, I just talked to another guy. Okay, give me the number.
But it's no immediate money out of their pocket because they're not covering this illegal for that.
You see what I'm saying?
So it creates a quandary.
Well, it'll be... Well, but then he go... Then he... He's not going to do that.
Clarence lessens it because they're...
Inject a few... Inject a pump probably on my big truck.
We'll see where he comes in.
Those kinds of cases are a little more challenging to settle. Because you have this conflict of views.
Next one.
Pro bono.
So the insurance company has to commence Clarence, you know, you've hit on this and we're not paying.
How's yours doing?
So that's why I like to do a mediation.
I got a league, over- ring league, I ring all the way in.
Usually as retired judges, they kind of tell it by...
Take your thing off.
I've never done a mediation where we didn't settle.
Hundred fifteen horsepower, right?
That's my hope, that they'll all agree.
No, if they could take it off me, it's about the way we work on it, so it'll be sixteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars.
Hundred, hundred.
Yeah. That's what...
Yes.
So I titled it, ran the league, just to kind of keep it...
We'll chat.
And I'll call the Powhatan County Planning Commission meeting to order. Mr. Ayers will lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan, and we ask your guidance tonight as we seek to do the people's business. Amen.
Amen. Moving on, let's approve the, I guess it would be March 3rd, meeting minutes. Do any of you have any comments or amendment to the minutes?
Not I.
All right. If not, I move we approve the March planning meeting minutes as provided. All those... Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Altman, anything to note in the administrative items?
No, ma'am.
Do y'all have any comments? Okay. We'll now have the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Woody Cofa, Powhatan, Virginia. I had a question on the RU district. In the old ordinance, we used to have a side property line of fifteen feet for anything less than a half an acre, half an acre or less. I just found out Friday, on the new ordinance, it calls for twenty-five feet. And I was wondering if y'all would consider going back and visit that and make it back to fifteen feet. It affects us a lot in Holly Hills and Lake Shawnee. And Lake Shawnee, most of them eighty feet, so we're going from a twenty-eight foot house to a... We used to have forty-eight feet to get in there, but now you're going back to a twenty-eight feet. So I was questioning why it was changed and could y'all change it back? Thank y'all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. March, can you make a note to look into that? Thank you. All right. We have no presentation, so moving on to the public hearings.
Good evening. We have just one conditional use permit case, the night fifteen oh two CUP. This is Joseph and Jenny Easter for Ms. Easter's grandmother, Ms. Arrington. The address, sixty seventy-one Old Buckingham Road, and is for temporary second dwelling for elderly infirm family member. Subject property is currently zoned eight ten, our cultural district. And this is the GIS of the property. You see the two addresses. To the left-hand side is Ms. Arrington's residence. To the right is where the Easters have their residence. This is the zoning overlay, eight ten, obviously. And this is the plat, and this was submitted with the original case back in two thousand and five. And this is looking into the subject property. The Easter residence is to the left, and Ms. Arrington's is to the right. Close the shop of Ms. Arrington's residence and of the Easters. This is looking back out to Old Buckingham Road. This is looking to the southwest along Old Buckingham and the property, and northeast along Old Buckingham. This is from the rear of the property. Case overview, temporary second dwelling, elderly infirm family member, conditional use in eight ten agricultural district. Proposed use fronts on Old Buckingham Road is indicated, seen in the pictures, and the access will be from the existing driveway on Old Buckingham Road. Comprehensive plan is rural preservation and uses in general accord with the comprehensive plan. Reviewing agencies had no outstanding concerns with this request. Staff has no outstanding concerns. Staff has received no formal comments from citizens on this request. CUP compliance history, is no record of any violations through the extent of this CUP, as I said, going back through two thousand and five. Staff does recommend approval of requests, subject to the list of recommended conditions. And I'm available, I don't see the applicant here, but I'm available for any questions at this time. And I did inform him this afternoon of the time, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay. So the applicant or his agent is not here?
No.
Okay. Okay. Let's, before we open this up, we'll have a public hearing on this CUP. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing there is no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do you all have any questions for staff?
I want to make a note of the approving zoning officer was Roy Crawford, planning director, ninety-five.
Been a long time.
Yep.
And our ordinance, if I may, says that they have to come back periodically to renew this conditional use permit to prove that they're still required to have it or eligible to have it. Is that correct?
Well, I don't believe that covers a renewal. I believe that would be covered under my annual inspections where they have to prove the need. So in my annual inspection, I would determine whether need's still there. In other words, whether the doctor still feels that two dwellings are preferable.
And what's the term of this current CUP that we are asking to approve?
I'm not recommending a term limit on it. Obviously, if you all feel that needs to occur, or the board feels a need to occur. So at this time, it would be until she's no longer living on the property, most likely deceased. She has a hundred and five, I've been told.
Yeah.
So we're not recommending a term limit.
Okay. Good. And I have one more question. Condition seven is the typical fire department thing about having address numbers visible from the road.
Right.
And this has been since nineteen ninety-five. Have we just ignored that requirement until now?
Well, I just recently took over actual physical inspections of the property as far as annual inspections. I'm not aware of what was done in the past. However, there's no record of anything, you know, up until this renewal period. But to address that situation, I did talk to Mr. Schoffel, and I did talk to the applicant to clarify that we need both addresses, minimum four-inch lettering and reflective right at Old Buckingham Road, and also on each individual dwelling to distinguish. Because if you recall from the picture, when you go in, you won't know unless it's on the, on each dwelling. He did agree to distinguish each one as well as put, obviously, on Old Buckingham, the individual address.
And will that be a... On your checklist for your next inspection?
Well, what I would want to do is go out and make sure that's done, you know, as soon as he can get it done.
Okay.
As soon as this, you know, if the board approves it.
All right.
That's my intent, and not wait, since this is a renewal. You know, and it's a new change, and as I say, I don't know what was done in the past, what was recommended in the past, but...
Well, I think that's pretty... That's been in here before, hasn't it?
Well, it didn't clarify about... It didn't clarify about each, you know, and Ed can tell you, we had to actually get, it wasn't an official address for each structure. He had one address on there.
But this condition hasn't, hasn't appeared in this CUP until now?
No, there was a condition on there for the standard one, but it wasn't clear about having each separate address.
Oh, I see.
It wasn't addressed separately.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Ed.
Okay. I believe this is in your district?
It is. I move that the commission recommend approval of fifteen oh two dash CUP. Motion's based upon public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance amendment now.
Yes, ma'am. The second, excuse me, the second public hearing we have this evening is to consider an ordinance amendment to Article Four Village Growth Area Districts, Article Seven Use Standards, and Article Eight Development Standards of Chapters eighty-three of the zoning ordinance of the Code of the County of Powhatan. Specifically, we will be amending Sections eighty-three dash three twenty-five, the Village Growth Overlay Districts, eighty-three, four, thirty-two, E six, C, Convenience Stores, eighty-four, thirty-two, E eight, D, Gas Stations, eighty-three, four, fifty-one, Access and Circulation, eighty-three, four, sixty-one, C one, Landscape Buffers, New Planting Stand... New Planting Standards, eighty-three, four, sixty-six, F one, Fences and Walls, Custom Area Material, eighty-three, four, seventy-five, D one, Exterior Architectural Standards, eighty-three, four, seventy-seven, K, Roofs, eighty-three, four, eighty-eight, D one, Signage Illumination, eighty-three, four, eighty-eight, E three, D, Signage Free Standing Signs, and eighty-three, four, eighty-eight, E three, E, Signage Setbacks. We'll be deleting Section eighty-three, three thirty, Route seven eleven, Village Special Overlay, Plan Overlay, and adding Section eighty-three, four, eighty-eight, M, Pedestrian Adities. We have discussed this proposed amendment. Essentially, to recap, the, at a board workshop, there was a discussion of eliminating or a feeling that there wasn't a need for the overlay district anymore in the seven eleven area, given the design standards that we have in the current zoning ordinance and the Development Standard section. So with that direction from the board, moving forward, looking at the requirements of the seven eleven overlay, it was felt by staff that perhaps we needed to retain some of those in other areas of the ordinance, because they do provide a little bit stricter standard specifically for that area, but there are also some provisions that were thought that may be better served from a countywide perspective. So with that, we presented with, to the Planning Commission, a comparison with our thoughts of where we could relocate some of those items, work through that with you over a couple of work sessions, and tonight you have the proposed ordinance in front of you. We haven't made any... Well, I believe I've made one small change since then, which is to delete a paragraph and move a sentence up one line. Other than that, it is the way that we presented it to you at the last workshop. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Quickly, if you'd like for me to go through what we're changing...
That'd be great.
Aside from deleting the entire, in its entirety, the overlay, we would be adding specific language in the Use Standards section of the code related to Convenience Stores, that a convenience store located within that seven eleven. So what we've done is we've taken the terminology from the comp plan. The Village, seven eleven Village Special Area Plan would have to comply with the following standards, that a convenience store is allowed only within a shopping center and only within a building containing at least three other uses other than a convenience store. All uses within the building shall be connected by party walls or partitions to form one continuous structure. And number three, vehicular access will be provided only via the shopping center's internal circulation system. For Section eight, which, D, which deals with gas stations, we've added the language that a gas station is only allowed within a mixed-use development or a shopping center. Vehicular access shall be provided via the mixed-use developments or shopping centers' internal circulation system only, six, not directly from an existing street. Three, the station shall be designed with the same architectural treatment as a mixed-use development or shopping center. And four, there shall be no more than two fuel dispensing islands with no more than double-sided fuel dispensing units. In the Development Standards section, under the circulation and access requirements of eighty-three, four, fifty-one, we're adding, except that, the mod... Following modified Development Standards shall apply within the seven eleven Village Special Area Plan in addition to the standards in Article Eight Development Standards. Access and circulation, an existing parcel along Route seven eleven may have a single driveway access connection to Route seven eleven, provided that an additional driveway connection on seven eleven, Route seven eleven, may be allowed there where the parcel has six hundred and twenty-five feet or more frontage along Route seven eleven, or where traffic impact analysis demonstrates that the proposed additional driveway connections will improve the safety and efficiency of the travel along Route seven eleven. Two, access to the new lots created along seven, Route seven eleven shall be provided via shared access, service drives or an internal subdivision street. Three, residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments shall provide right turn lanes, tapers from Route seven eleven into the development site that are at least four hundred feet long and shall provide turn lane, shall provide left turn lanes from Route seven eleven into the development site where recommended by VDOT. In Section eighty-three, four, sixty-one, Landscape and Landscaping and Buffers, under the New Planting Standards under A, one, deals with deciduous trees. The current requirement countywide is for a deciduous tree or shade tree to have a caliper of at least two and one-half inches and be ten foot in height. What we've added is language that would say, except, within the seven eleven area, it would need to be three and one-half inches, and it shall be twelve feet in height. Number two is under story, small maturing or ornamental trees. Same instance here, there, it's a caliper requirement of one inch, eight feet in height. Seven eleven, we would be two and a half inches and ten foot in height at the time of planting. For number three, evergreen trees, currently countywide, it's five feet, same type of situation, except in the seven eleven area, it would need to be six foot in height. Coming down to eighty-three, four, sixty-six, fences and walls, actually, this is where I did make a change. So the change that we, that we, the language we had in the ordinance at the last discussion said the same thing, except within. And the more that I went through and thought about it, we have other village areas in the county, here in the courthouse and along sixty. And our village, we have, in our Development Standards, we have certain standards that deal with Village District for multifamily townhouse, and then Village District for commercial types. There's two sets of standards. So what I've done, and what you have, is change it to say, instead of saying except in the seven eleven village area, it says, except for multifamily townhouse, institutional, commercial, and mixed-use development in the Village Growth Area Districts, where chain link, you can't, basically, we're prohibiting chain link and wire fences in those areas, as opposed to just in the seven eleven area. That was the one big, big, one change deviation from what we talked about. In eighty-three, four, seventy-five, Architectural Design Standards for Business, we're deleting the language in number one, and actually, you have the updated one, and I don't have it. It says, currently, we're adding, no building exterior visible from the existing planned roadway shall be constructed entirely of metal or on board concrete, or of an architectural material inferior in quality, appearance, or detail than any other exterior of the same building. And we added that language plus, thank you. Building facade materials shall be limited to wood, brick, stone, decorative block, or stucco, the use of vinyl or metal, metal or vinyl siding, or plain-faced concrete block is subject to review and approval of the director. And the language used to say, use of green materials shall be encouraged. I'm pretty sure I knew where that language came from. But as I read it, I began to think, well, what does, what's green? Does it mean we want everything to be the color green? I know what we intended was the environmentally, environmental aspect of green, but it doesn't say that. So I thought, I added the language, use of green or environmentally friendly materials, so it should be friendly in there.
Yeah, I was going to say yours, that's a good word.
But when we talk, when I start, the more and more I sat and looked at this thing, the more and more I thought of ways to tweak it and change it. And when I got to that, I said, I know what we intend, but what it says is green. Does that, so does that mean that we want all buildings to be gr, the color green? So that's where the environmentally friendly piece will come in, and I needed to add the word friendly. And three, eighty-three, four, seventy-seven, the Institutional, Commercial, and Mixed-Use Development Standards in the Village Growth Districts, specifically dealing with roofs, we're adding a number three, any roof visible from an adjoining street or property shall be constructed of wood, tile, standing seam metal, heavy-grade architectural property glass, shingles, or slate. And in the same section, we're adding a sub, sub letter M, pedestrian amenities, architectural pedestrian amenities such as benches, fountains, decorative light fixtures, planters, and awnings shall be provided, subject to review and approval by the director. And under signage, eighty-three, four, eighty-eight, under D one, these are general sign standards for illumination. Currently, we have, the sentence reads, signs may be internally or externally illuminated, provided for the, provided the external illumination shall be concealed or screened and properly focused upon the sign itself, as to prevent glare upon the surrounding area. We struck the word surrounding area and inserted adjoining public streets and properties except in the Village, seven eleven Village Special Area Plan, where internally illuminated signage shall be prohibited, external, internally illuminated signage shall be prohibited. So we're looking for external lights shining on the, on the signage. And then, under signage, again, sub number three, free standing signs, D, we're adding language to that section that states, except in the seven eleven special plan area, all signs shall have a maximum height not to exceed six feet and a maximum sign area of twenty-four square feet or fifty square feet for commercial planned developments, office parks, shopping centers, and unified mixed-use developments. And these were all, as you know, taken from that seven eleven area and brought over to complement it. And then the last item is setbacks for signage. Letter E one, monument signs shall be set back at least five feet from any property line. We've added the language, except in the Route seven eleven special area plan, where all signs shall be set back at least ten feet from any property line or public street right of way. And that is the entirety of the changes.
Great. Let's have the public hearing, and then we'll open it for some discussion. Okay? That being said, anyone wishing to speak regarding this ordinance amendment, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Tom Hackett, and unfortunately, I didn't get a copy of that before this meeting. So in just two or three sentences, could you tell us, are you changing something that was in the comprehensive plan originally, when it was adopted several years ago? And if you are, are you making the, are you making the ordinance more liberal or more restrictive, especially in regard to the seven eleven overlay?
We're not amending the comp plan at this time, so that doesn't change any of the requirements of the comp plan. And really, what we've done is, the zoning ordinance has requirements in the seven eleven overlay district that are more strict, more stringent for the seven eleven area than they are countywide. And in deleting that section, we've taken some of those requirements and brought them over into the text of the ordinance, so we haven't lost those requirements. We're just really taking them from one place and putting them in another, is what we're doing.
And what happens to the, to the requirements in the seven eleven area?
Well, we're transferring them from more or less Section A to Section B.
It was redundant.
They'll still be there.
They will be there. Yes.
Remain in play for seven eleven.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's why we created a lot of the language that says, this is, this is the county, countywide requirement, except in the seven eleven area, this is the requirement.
Streamlines it.
Yeah.
So that was what we've done. We haven't...
Yeah, we haven't changed it or made it less stringent.
Right.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make a comment? Mr. Hackett, I would recommend that you go by the county administration building and look at these changes before the board meets, so that you'll really understand what we're doing. It's okay.
And he, it's the agenda, I believe, is on our web page, Planning Commission Agenda Packet, so...
Oh, the Agenda Packet is, okay.
Good evening. My name's Richard Mensing, and I'm like Tom, pro, unprepared, but I did hear in the discussion about sections where there would be consideration for adding lanes or something about left-hand turns. Is that on seven eleven, or could that be on any street, or...
Specifically off of seven eleven.
Okay. In, in what we're going to track down, that will show the, the areas where that's being proposed?
It, it won't show physically on seven eleven, it's just language in the ordinance that states that if there's a development fronting on seven eleven, that they have to provide tapers of four hundred foot or a turn lane if VDOT requires it. And it's the same language that's currently in our ordinance.
Okay.
We're not taking that requirement away, we're just moving it from one section to another.
Where we live, in my estimation, it's very dangerous when you're going west on seven eleven and you're turning into gray walls to make that left-hand turn. Two problems. A lot of times, the car's behind you, even though that's a no passing zone. If you do not look, they will come flying by you. A couple of times, I've been almost hit. And the other thing is, traffic coming east down seven eleven, they're coming down that hill. And I just think it's very dangerous.
And for, for you and Mr. Hackett, I think it's important to note, these requirements are only applicable to the area of, from two eighty-eight east. They're not, they don't apply to the area west of two eighty-eight. They're only applying to two eighty-eight east.
How do we go about having something like that looked, looked at? VDOT, or...
Well, if there were a develop, well, certainly in the area that you're at now, there's an existing development, that would be something that we could talk with, with VDOT.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, but I just wanted to say it is very dangerous.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did you hear that?
Seeing there is no one, we'll close the public hearing. Now, open it up for you all, discussion.
Help me with some background. Why, in this Village Special Area Plan, do we prohibit internally illuminated signage and encourage external, I'm not, I'm just curious of what that accomplishes?
Unfortunately for me, y'all had already adopted that section in the code when I got here, so I'm not sure of the discussion that you have. I think it's probably more of an aesthetic item than anything else, to have an, you know, the spotlight on the sign as opposed to, you know, the extreme example, the McDonald's sign that's illuminated from within. In this case, it might be a brick sign with name, a company name on it, and just externally...
But we're, we're saying, you cannot have, in the seven eleven illuminated, internally illuminated sign.
Correct. And that's the, and that's, yeah, that's the requirement currently.
No, I understand, I just... Richard, do you know why?
No. I don't remember that.
I don't remember that, to be honest.
I would just think that, particularly as we worry about night skies, that illuminating, you know, bouncing light off of a structure would not be as night sky friendly as illuminating it within. That's...
Except the aesthetic aspect, to me, that would be, I mean, it would...
You'd rather, you'd rather have lights bouncing off of it?
That's just an aesthetic...
Okay.
And I think if you go to Winterfield now, and they have that, it's not, because it's focused right here, it's not really reflecting up.
It's a lower focus than it is upward, yeah.
I understand, it just, it just seems like you capture more light when you put it inside or something, that's all.
And the only guess that I could have is that maybe some of these requirements came out of that citizen study group that was...
That's, that's fine, I just...
Yeah, I don't remember any reason in the discussion.
You're more than welcome to change it. It's up to y'all.
The tree calipers, did you, if you all, March and I discussed this briefly, you know, it's more stringent in the, they have to be bigger in the seven eleven district as opposed to the rest of the county. Are you all fine with that, or do you want to change them one way or the other so it's equal all throughout?
I'd like to ask my master gardener, okay? There, there is a size tree that you put in that's larger that defeats the purpose. It does not grow as quickly. You can put one in too big, and, and it just doesn't work for you. It just sits there and doesn't do anything.
Yeah. But you can also...
But you can also put in small trees that are essentially stunted at that height, and it takes years for them to create the expected landscape effect.
That you're looking for.
If I, if we were going to consolidate one way or the other, I'd opt for the larger caliper and taller trees, too. I've read some things recently that said that people were sort of selling themselves short by requiring smaller vegetative sizes.
So, you can be too little, or you can be too big.
Well, I suppose you can't be too big, sure.
No, 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 I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm trying to be, there is, there is a better...
You know, root balls that are this big around.
Yeah.
So, you can get a twenty-foot tree to go in a hole and live, obviously, if they can, they can do it, other people can do it.
I wouldn't have a problem making it uniformly the larger.
Well, I'm fine with leaving it as it is, but if you all want to do that, that's...
I don't understand the cost ramifications of...
I don't either, I don't know how much money it's actually expensive, a larger tree is, either, I don't. Do you have any idea of that?
Bigger is more expensive, I would assume.
Obviously, but relatively speaking, you know?
Without, without having any cost pieces, I would be reticent to change it.
Okay. We'll leave it as is. All right. Anything else? Okay.
Like, the word use of green or environment, I just put environmentally friendly.
Okay.
And get rid of green.
Yeah. Unless you, unless someone feels really strongly about it, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of it, you know, still somewhat of an ambiguity, but I think it opens the door for doing some better things, so that's, doesn't matter.
Okay. All righty. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will, I will make a motion. I move that the commission recommend approval of these amendments to the zoning ordinance as described and as modified this evening. This motion is based upon the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other business, from anyone?
Work.
All right. Moving on to our workshop.
Right, I'll keep on going from here?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm going to pass around two, there's two of each, this is our discussion of the industrial setbacks. So, we've shown them the hundred-and-fifty foot that's currently out there. This is similar to what's in your packet, but we've added a couple of extra lines. The yellow is the hundred-and-fifty feet, then we have...
Okay, bye-bye, thank you.
Good night. A red line that shows what fifty-foot would look like, and a blue line that shows seventy-five foot, just to give you a point of reference. In your packet, there was a table with what the setbacks were in some of our adjoining communities here in the Rich, greater Richmond area, and a copy of, I believe, the current setback requirement, and then the old buffering requirement from the old ordinance was in there also. I think when we, obviously, when we look at the hundred-and-fifty feet, it becomes a little tad bit restrictive for a lot of our users. And even when we go into Oak Bridge, which is the right-hand side of the top one, we, it somewhat renders some of those lots useless.
Useful.
And then, some, a lot of our existing properties in Oak Bridge and others, you really couldn't expand on. And I think, in discussing this with staff, the left-hand side of the top one is weight pack on sixty, and they had, or have plans, from the very beginning, to add to this building and do some additional structures on site. That hundred-and-fifty foot would pretty much limit their ability to do any expansion whatsoever on the property. The bottom two examples on the left-hand side are Maslow Wood, and then, on the right-hand side is Rapid Manufacturing on Route sixty. So, Rapid, pretty much, under our current requirement, unless they rezone the front two parcels, can't do anything, really, at all. So...
Yeah. And they don't want to rezone because we're asking them for a right-of-way dedication.
We're, so, we're talking about that.
It's been before us before, for consideration, and turned around for that reason, just so some of you guys may not know that.
Okay. So, looking at the list of other communities, staff is certainly open to your thoughts, how you would like to go. We put the two lines of reference on there just to give you some, something to consider. You could go less than fifty-foot, you could do, I think previously, you had a requirement for setback and a buffer requirement, you could reduce, you could reduce the buffer if you increase the plantings in the buffer. So, there's different ways that we could approach it. I'm not married to one way or another, I'm completely open for suggestions.
What would you like, sir?
Well, when I put my economic development hat on, really would like for these abilities, these companies to be able to expand here in Palatine and not relocate somewhere else, I view the hundred-and-fifty foot a little punitive, although, I believe the requirement is in the ordinance, the old ordinance. When I looked at the old ordinance, there, that requirement is there.
Wow.
So, I'm not sure, looking at some of these buildings, how they got there, but I'm okay with the fact that they got there, because we enjoy the tax base and the ability for those companies to locate here.
I think...
I have a concern, okay, so, I don't necessarily have an issue with going to fifty-foot. Now, the front setback off the road is set, and that's fine in the ordinance, we're not, I think that's seventy-five foot, I think. So, that's not what we're worried about. The only concern that I have is when we get into these areas where we have, we abut some residential.
That's...
Vacant ag.
Who cares?
I'm not, you know, it's, it's difficult, because particularly when we look at the situation at Maslow, it's, it's surrounded by woods, you don't know it's there. But that's different if these are fields on either side and it's wide open. So, how do we balance that? Do we have a reduction if it's adjacent to other industrial property, commercial property, because of that transition, you know, from a ag, residential, commercial, industrial, have some sort of sliding scale, if you will? Or do you have a setback, but where you have ag or residential, you have a buffer, a larger, a buffer that you require increased plantings in? And then, let's just assume for a minute it's fifty-foot, but the buffer's seventy-five foot or a hundred-foot, and you have to plant within it. The buffer then becomes almost the equivalent of the setback requirement, because you're restricting the ability within the buffer to build anything. So, it, it's, it's kind of difficult, because, and also, what makes it difficult is how our industrial properties are dispersed. They're not clustered in one particular area around each other.
Right, they're scattered.
Most of them have ag around them.
I think that explains the hundred-and-fifty feet.
Yeah.
And, and the philosophy of the county for a long time hadn't been for much development, including industrial.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I think that's probably, with the last comp plan, I think that overall philosophy changed some, and maybe we should go ahead and change with it on these, I mean, because there is one of the people that I used to work, sit with on a committee, said, "That would be draconian."
How do you get to where you want to be without being super complex in deciding how you're going to do it? How do you build in flexibility? Do you take it on case by case, in some way?
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Maybe not, but then, then how do you say, "Okay, well, next residential, you have to have a bigger..."
Why don't you do a buffer next to residential? I mean, that's basically what you, the part where, at least myself, we're more concerned about, is the industrial being saddled next to the residential. I mean, what happens if we put a buffer of sorts, you know? I mean, if you have a good buffer, you know, the setback, like he said, you can be in the middle of the field, and if you have a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, but if it's in the middle of the field, you're going to see it. I mean, you can have a dense buffer, you know, in twenty feet, and you're not going to see it, so...
Is this, but we're looking at our inventory of...
Industrial property.
Not, not all of them.
We've got...
Because these don't have any problems with...
Well, Rapid, I think, does have a little bit of commercial, that's our, I know what you're saying, you're saying that they're not really abutting residential that much.
These don't deal with the problem you're talking about.
Right. We've got, the other ones we have are Jefferson off of five-twenty-two, which backs up to some ag property.
That's pretty heavily wooded back there, too.
And then, we also have South Creek, and then Mosley, and we won't, I won't even talk about Mosley. I don't really consider that a viable site, so...
Are, um, are the buffers allowed inside the setbacks, or is the distance from the property line buffer plus setback?
I, I think, well, if the buffer is greater, I think you measure the buffer from the property line, so we have, in this sense, let's just use this instance, we've got a fifty-foot setback in red and a seventy-five-foot buffer. So, the buffer essentially becomes more of a setback, because it's greater than the setback requirement.
Is it whatever's the greatest, is that what you're saying?
Well, if you make the buffer bigger than the setback, the buffer really becomes the setback, because you can't do anything within the buffer.
Right.
So, if you had a seventy-five-foot setback, required a fifty-foot buffer planted, that's within...
That's within the setback.
Within the setback.
Okay.
Not in addition to.
Not in addition to.
Because if it's in addition to, we wind up kind of in the same spot we're at.
Way too much. Right, I agree. I think there is probably no way that the buffer should be bigger than the setback.
Well, if you think about it, used to, if you planted a buffer thicker, you could reduce it up to forty percent.
Right. Reduce your setback.
Yes, if you...
Oh, no. You could reduce the buffer.
Fifty-foot buffer, a seventy-five, I mean, fifty-foot setback, seventy-five-foot buffer, you could plant extra trees and reduce the buffer.
Reduce that.
And setback, the one you're saying, fifty. But it would be more plantings in that fifty than the, that was the old, reducing buffers.
Right. Right. And what does the new, or the draft subdivision ordinance say in regards to screening and buffering requirements?
All of that's in the zoning ordinance now.
Oh, okay.
And in there, they have a type A, a type B, and a type C, depending on what your zoning's on, and you can either have fifteen-foot with X number trees, or sixty-five-foot with less trees.
All right. Well, why are we looking at the screening and buffering requirements from the subdivision ordinance?
This is...
Didn't you say this was the new subdivision ordinance, or from the...
No, this is from the old subdivision ordinance. Old subdivision ordinance requirement.
What, where are the requirements in the new zoning ordinance regarding buffers?
He just, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're in there.
Looking at the industrial...
They're in those zones, okay.
Yeah, we've got three, three types of buffers.
Eighty-three, four-sixty-one, side of eight.
So, it's any industrial area.
I'll share with you.
Eighty-three, two-sixty-eight was the page number?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you're looking at...
The zoning law?
Eighty-three, two-sixty-eight.
Yeah, page number.
Yeah.
Two-sixty-eight?
Yes, two-sixty-eight.
Eighty-three, dash, four-sixty-one.
Right.
And then, page two-forty-two.
We need the old one. Well, is that where four-sixty-one starts? Yeah. Perimeter, perimeter buffers is item letter E.
E, E.
Right. And we've got option A, option B, option C.
Okay.
And then, you've got a table that follows that, that shows you if you're, if the existing lane use type, what you're abutting, and what type of buffer that is required.
Okay, so...
Those buffer types give you, it's a wider buffer with less plantings, a narrower buffer if you increase your planting or add plants.
And doesn't that take care of the language that was formerly in the subdivision ordinance in terms of the ability to shrink the buffer with more intensive plantings?
Yes, I would say so.
I think so, too.
The thing that was in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah. Well...
Well, okay, I'm sorry, I thought this was, it says, from the old subdivision.
I think it came from the old, I don't know if it...
Yeah, it was probably the zoning, that's right.
Yeah, it was the old zoning ordinance.
Okay.
There, and you could reduce the buffer up to forty percent with additional plantings, and you have to go one and a half times what you're going to require.
So, if I look at this industrial setbacks table comparison that you gave us, the former ZO and the current ZO are the same thing, they're just reversed.
Right.
So, it, hundred-and-fifty looks bigger than fifty, but they're still the same.
Right.
Right, so that hasn't changed.
The...
It was only adjacent to certain districts.
True, but now we've added more districts, so...
It's every district.
Right.
Yes.
That's the difference.
Okay.
The hundred-and-fifty foot applies really everywhere now, except adjacent to existing industrial.
That's for I-one.
Right.
I mean, it can, it can be fifty feet. Okay, I'm sorry.
If the only districts that they've got here are I-one, I-two, and that's only three districts that you can have a small buffer.
Where are, ah, the setbacks are in the yard requirements for each zoning district, correct?
In that little box, little table.
Okay, so, this table that you've given us summarizes all of those yard requirements for I-one and I-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they're found.
So, obviously, the yard requirements are bigger, well, in most cases, bigger than the setback requirements. Then, then...
Sad setback is what you're looking at.
Than the buffer, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the hundred-and-fifty feet is bigger than the buffer.
Now, if we, if we just went with fifty feet on sides and rears for setback...
Right.
Then, that might give somebody the opportunity to put a building within a buffer, right?
Say that again?
Depends on the width of the buffer.
Well, it, it does, but if you look at option two, under, I don't know what this is...
This is really confusing, guys.
On, I guess it's the C-type, C-type buffer.
What page are you on, again?
I'm on two-sixty-nine.
Two-sixty-nine.
This one, one's called type A buffer, one's called type B buffer, but the other one isn't called type C.
Yeah, the opaque buffer.
Maybe we need to fix that.
Hmm? It's right there, it's just not centered.
Oh, it's on the bottom of the first page.
It's a formatting issue from UNI code.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So, we've got buffer and setback problems.
So, if we went with fifty-feet sides, side and rear, then in the opaque buffer, the, the buffer is actually wider than the yard requirement.
Right, if you do option two.
If you do option two under type C.
And if you do, if you increase the amount of plantings to do option one, it's a thirty-foot buffer as opposed to the sixty-five, which would be less than the setback.
But you still could build within fifty feet.
Of...
But if the building setback is fifty feet, that's going to be more strict than the thirty, so you'd never get down to thirty feet.
Right, but the... But the buffer would fit inside the setback in that case. What I'm saying is, in one case here, the buffer is going to lap over the... It's going to exceed the setback, or it could.
Right.
I don't think we want that.
With option two with less plantings, your buffer is straight to a building approximately to property line.
Yep.
Instead of the setback. Okay.
And if you had a tree, you could get the setback back to 50 feet if that was the setback changed.
Is there any way... I know you don't want to hear this. We can go through and streamline this? I mean, maybe not tonight. I mean, this is... I mean, as an economic development director, do you really find this very easy to look at? I mean, seriously?
Well, I think...
Plant your way into a buffer.
I think...
Yeah.
Well, we... So you've got your buffer table below this that tells you what buffer you have to use. If you're... If my proposed use is industrial and I'm adjacent to single-family, then I have to use C. If I'm adjacent to other institutional or commercial uses, I have to use B. Then that gives the developer, the contractor, the builder, the property owner, the option of saying, "Well, if I'm in C, I've got to use C." And the setback's 50-foot, but really, because I have a 65-foot wide buffer, it's really 65 feet. But I can reduce that if I put more plantings in. That gives them the opportunity to either say their... That gives them an option. It's not requiring that you do only 30. It gives you the option. And if you've got 100 acres of land, it's... 65 feet's probably not going to hurt you. But when you're looking at what we have existing inventory-wise, it hurts. So as we've kind of said all along, as we go through and try to navigate this thing,
We'll find some of the...
We'll find more tweaks to make.
Yeah.
So...
I have to admit that I, for one, didn't put setbacks and buffers together when we were drafting the ordinance. We looked at them separately.
Right.
Yard requirements and zoning districts had no relationship to buffer requirements.
That's why you have a consultant, had a consultant, was to make sure...
Yeah.
Yeah. Well...
But you're right.
Anyway, we didn't figure it out on that one.
Do you want to look at reconciliation of that and come back with...
Yeah. We need to...
All right. Do you know what you want now?
I don't know what I want. Well, as far as retooling it, I don't know what I want right now.
What about this? Just the pure... Set the buffer aside for a second. Let's call it the pure setback, which 150 feet all the way. That's a little easier to understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We're talking about sides and rear, right?
Sides and rear. 75-foot off the front, usually that's no problem. That... The ordinance for the industrial districts is just a straight 75-foot off the front, no matter what district you're in. For me, if I'm in Oakbridge and I've got nothing but industrial property around me, do I need to be 75-foot off the road from the industrial guy across the street?
No.
Probably not.
No.
But at... On Anderson Highway, 522, where you have other uses around you, that 75-foot probably is applicable. So when I look at it, my concern comes into play twofold. That ag residential piece around you. The other one, though, is we apply the same standards within the I development. So now, where you would typically have other industrial users all in the same park, you typically wouldn't have as high of a standard because it's light uses. So that's my concern there for, say, Oakbridge or South Creek or the next one of those that comes along, the internal piece. That, you know, there's internal setbacks.
Right.
But then there's the external to the other side.
Right.
I think when we have a new one come in fresh, it'll be easier to apply some of this on the external properties when they... But what we've got is we've got the standard that's being applied to the existing, and it's not really working right, I guess. And I completely see... I mean, we looked at... You've looked at each zoning district and you've dealt with the setbacks when you were looking at the zoning districts. And then we went over here and talked about development standards and the two nary show me.
Unfortunately, they did.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the things that we're... I've asked as part of our... The Economic Development Strategic Plan, Bowman is looking at our ordinance requirements. They're going through... Even though we went through it, they're going to go through it. What I've asked them to do is take some of these items and put it together on a lot and say, "This is what the requirement says." So we have an idea of what all of these items or how they're working together. Not just industrial, but also on the commercial side. What does it do to a typical out parcel at Stave Mill, let's say? How do all these things fall into place? So we have an idea, a point of reference when we go back to make some tweaks. We can kind of see a real-world application of the ordinance. Because I think right now, it's a little difficult because it's kind of like talking about it a little bit in the abstract because you don't really know what it's going to look like on the ground. So that's why we tried to provide the maps, like to give some point of reference
Very much. So thank you.
What 50 and 75-foot would look like.
We've got a bunch of businesses locked up. We've got to fix that.
Yeah.
I mean, they just...
I look around at the table that I provided with all of the other communities, and there's... I was surprised by some of the leniency in some of them.
Yeah.
My feeling here, and y'all have all been here much, much longer than I have, is I think if we went any less than 50 feet, we would probably be pushing it a little bit. And I'm... And to some degree, I'm a little hesitant on the 50 feet. However, when I look at some of these, I don't know if 75 would help in some instances.
I think we need to go 50 feet.
Aren't particularly concerned about 50.
No. And I think their numbers may be good to apply to light zoning, say, I-1 to I-1 or I-1 to I-2.
Right.
Our yard requirements could be a lot smaller in those situations than in I to anything else.
Yep.
So we could use 30 in one case and 50 in the other.
Right. And that's where I said, you know, how complex or where do you want to go with...
50, whatever.
Yeah. And you could... We could take this table here on 8315 is where the side of the table where the use standards are. And right now, it just, you know, it just says side yard and it says abutting and it lists them all. It's 150 feet. But we could break that out into if it's these districts, it's this. If it's these districts, it's this. So my guess is we would have a higher requirement of abutting residential, probably our village residential districts. And then our ag would be my other guess. Now, I don't know about... We don't have any, and I'm not saying that we won't ever have any, but I don't... Owen, you can correct me here. Light ag adjacent to an intensive or an intensive ag adjacent to a light industrial, almost kind of the same.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we would have to have that requirement on the AC district like we would a general ag. Because in general ag, we've got by right residential, you know, single-family and things like that.
Well, on the AC, we've got them setback so far from their property lines that, you know, we're protecting whoever it is from them, not them from somebody else.
Right. Yeah. So the ones that come into play for me where I'm not sure about are, say, our RC district. It's residential and commercial. I would think we'd have a lesser requirement adjacent to commercial. And RC, we're giving you the option. And, you know, that... I don't know how you coming in, well, it's either or next door. How, you know, how do we reconcile some of those districts? That's the one that gives me the most trouble. If it was straight residential, it's easy, but it's a vacant piece of land with the option to go either way.
Well, how much industrial land do we have, zone that's not developed? Industrial, yeah. Do we...
Just Mosley, right?
But it can be rezoned.
When I'm getting that, we can do a lot with rezoning.
Yeah.
Yep.
But let's say I come in and I want to rezone an RC split with A-10 to I-1.
Right.
And on one side of me is an RC and on the other side of me is an A-10.
Yep.
Waitpac's a perfect example of that. So what do we do? What buffer does Wakepac have to have to one adjoining use versus another adjoining use? And if... There's nothing to say that the A-10 won't be developed into residential in the future, too. So, you know, I mean, Wakepac's going to get their foot in the door first, but then somebody else is going to come in and live closer than the ordinance. It'd be nonconforming, I guess, because the setback is required of the industrial, not of the residential use.
And I think part of... Part of the catch-22 is the list of 64 permitted uses by right in I-1. Because I would say most of what we currently have, with the exception in South Creek of the asphalt plant, most of what we have in I-1 are light industrial uses that are contained within a building. Rapid, all within the building. Wakepac, all in the building. Moslo, in the building. Wakepac over in Oakbridge, in the building. The one that jumps out that probably caused the most heartburn and friction for everybody is the asphalt plant. And that's the one that's completely wide open and might be more of an I-2 than an I-1. So what I'm looking at, Pi-Tech, all in the building. That's an industrial piece of... And a light industrial piece of property. It's a software development firm. They're not causing any problems outside their walls. So that's kind of the catch is what we have existing is happening within four walls, and you don't really know what's happening behind those four walls. It looks like any other office building. But when we get into some of these uses, it's a little bit different.
Yeah. You've got to be careful.
So if we're... I agree. If we're... We can do a lot with rezoning, provided that under the current way it is, someone's coming in with a 200-acre development. But if it's, you know, Wakepac coming in, that one parcel, and it's 100-foot wide and 500, 1,000-foot deep, and that is more problematic for us, that's why I start to think about the 50 feet. But again, how do we deal with our... Part of me... Okay. So this is on tape, and this might sound really bad. But part of me just wants to say, "It's RC, but I'm going to... I've got to treat you as commercial. I've got to assume..." In this case, I'm going to assume that you're going to develop the more intensive use. Worst-case scenario, it's commercial. That hurts the guy that does the residential next door because I got in first, then you came in and built your house there. Well, to some degree, buyer beware.
Buyer beware. You're going into a commercial area.
I was already there. You know, it's kind of the way it works. As a board member that I had, and then what he used to always say with people that moved in next to the farm, "You know what? If you didn't like the smell of pigs when you looked at the house, you shouldn't have bought the house." So I don't know what your thoughts are about how we would treat RC. That's the one problematic district that I have. I can easily come back with an amendment that breaks this table down into two sections. And this is a setback here. This is a setback there for this other one. And we could bat it around, you know. I'm open for your guidance.
You want us to try to eliminate RC? Is that what you're trying to say?
No. Not at all. Well...
Should have been done a day ago.
But to March's defense, I would look at RC as commercial.
I would, too.
Honestly, I don't think we should look at that as... That's my opinion. I don't think we should be buffering at that as if it's residential.
I actually...
I agree.
Owen, I would say eliminating districts easing. It's then rezoning all those properties to something else is when you're going to want to retire.
Why don't you do that? March, go back and put that table together. Let's look at it. As soon as you're treating...
RC.
RC.
It's more commercial.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of been our philosophy for years, Emmett Richard. We've been trying to get rid of the residential part of that.
Well, I mean, the board made that RC so that it would develop commercially. They didn't make it so it would be residential.
Right.
So...
And that was kind of the intent. If you look at with our water sewer, it's...
So can I just ask in general? So my guess is that they made it RC so then the residential that was already there wouldn't be nonconforming?
Yeah. Part of it.
Gotcha. We did a similar thing in Hopewell, but we just flat-out said, "Sorry, it's all B4 now, and you're nonconforming." But what we did in the nonconforming section of the ordinance was put an exception for that district. If your house was damaged, it burned, you could build back, even though it was nonconforming. We provided an exception.
That was...
Well...
Yeah. But we... I forget how many of those lots we got up and down 60. I had... Might have been Roy Crawford. He did the number of lots that were undeveloped, RC, up and down 60.
I think y'all did that for us a year or two ago, too.
Quite a few.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, my recollection of our discussion of buffers, I don't want to make this any more complicated than it has to be, but that was where we were trying to decide how to separate dissimilar uses and to protect one occupant of land from the other occupant of land's use.
Right.
And we thought that the buffering and screening
Would be more effective.
Were really going to be the effective way to do that rather than just setbacks.
And I think it is, but this is just terribly confusing. You know, I think. I mean, looking at this chart is just not real... You have to look at four different things to figure out... I don't know. There's got to be a way we can make that a little more user-friendly. I mean, if we can't figure it out, how do we expect somebody else to...
Well, I tell you what. I don't want to go back to the time when we do site plans.
Yeah. I mean, I...
No worries. Each one individually?
Yeah. Bottom line, you've got to make it simple. You have two completely dissimilar uses. You want a thick buffer.
Yes.
You know? That's pretty much it.
I can bring y'all something back.
I would like, as we go forward, to find a way not to deal with more complicated, but to deal with simpler.
Simplifying.
And if the one size doesn't end up working perfectly, I don't think we can make it perfect. I mean, we can't... You cannot...
Make accommodations for every district, every...
Well, that's what...
And you can't... You can't anticipate all that's going to happen. Wakepac, of course, was an auto dealership. Okay? And we were very happy that that building turned into something, okay? And so... But if you were drawing up rules for an auto dealership, you'd never get to where Wakepac was. I mean, it's just... So I would ask you to err on the side of something I could understand.
Simplicity?[1715.68]
Yes, sir.
We can do that.
One more item on this chart with weight pack, they actually stopped the I one zone before you get to the pond. About half of it is I one in the front. The rear is still A ten.
I thought so. And they bought the whole parcel, didn't they? But they only rezoned, rezoned the front part.
Before you get to where the pond crosses.
Right, that's because the owner was thinking about, he might live back in the back.
In that case, there are two on the back, there's still abutting A ten.
Which, which means you have to have a hundred and fifty foot setback.
Yeah. Makes it worse.
Yep.
Okay, is that, um, so you can bring us something forward in May?
Would you like it to be workshop item or just a public hearing?
Um.
Workshop.
Okay.
Please.
Okay. Um, private roads, I'll have that for you in May as well. It's pretty much everything's status quo, except I got some information from the PDC, which I'll share with you beforehand.
And one item quickly, I met yesterday with VDOT about administering the Route sixty corridor study from the county line to Flat Rock, a special area plan. So, they, their on-call consultant can provide us everything that I asked for in that draft scope of services that I showed y'all. The exception of three items, which I understand. It's, there's, the, the money's coming through the NPO from transportation funds, therefore, the money, the, the plan has to kind of focus on the relationship between transportation and land use. So, the architectural design guidelines, patterns, that's not something that they can give us, which I understand. Development standards, that wasn't something, but we do have the development standards in the ordinance now. And then, uh, looking at a vision, goals, and objectives for future development, those are the three things. However, I'm going to meet with their on-call separately to discuss these three, and it may be that we can contract with them through our, because. Their on-call, that they're using as Timmins, they're one of our on-calls. So, we could potentially contract with them separately to provide us those items in the plan. We would just have to pay for them. I have, I'm going to meet with them next week to talk about that. But everything else they can provide for us, they're doing a similar type plan over in Goochland. Right there on Broad Street, coming into the county to, can't remember the name of the, the intersection, but their main, kind of that first big intersection they have where they have some commercial development. So, I'm comfortable with that, um, and working with the VDOT residency, and so, we should be getting, moving forward with that, hopefully here soon.
All right, anything else? All right, meeting adjourned. Not bad, earlier than I thought. I know. Told you we could wrap it up early.
It's good considering last night.
How long was that last?
I left last night at nine oh five. They were here, what, ten thirty?